0.04.
You have to search. Ask Bebe, he pretty knows.
Bebe, are you going to talk about this in your committee tonight?
Sorry. We good to go?
We're good.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, so today's June 2nd, 2025. It is Monday. Today's the committee of the whole meeting for Barburton City Council. Before we begin our Barburton City Council, we do have individual committee meetings this evening. And we'll start with streets, sidewalk, and lighting. Mrs. Beck is absent, so Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is June 2nd, time is 18:02 hours, we're in council chambers. I call the Streets, Sidewalks, and Lighting Committee to order. All members are present of the committee with the exception of Ms. Beck. All council members are present, and guests noted on my sheet. We have one piece of requests for legislation. A letter from Michael Tiedeki, city engineer, requesting legislation to enter into contract with Construction King, Inc. For the concrete paving project. Total contract will be $913,682. Emergency wording requested, please see request. Everybody has seen the map up in Austin Estates. Shannon Doe Boulevard, East Heatherwood Drive. Mr. Tiedeki, can you speak a little bit about it?
I forwarded a map to everybody, hopefully you got it with the limits of the project. They're replacing the bad concrete panels in their entirety, along with joint repair, to the entire concrete pavement section within those limits. There's some good pavement sections in there that they won't be replacing, but for the most part, where they're replacing it, it'll be curb to curb, and some of them will have some joint repairs of that, so, any questions?
Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Tiedeki, is this like the road projects, if there's money left over, is there a backup? Like extra concrete we do somewhere? I know with the roads, we have like a secondary list.
We did not add that in there because for the grant, the OPWC grant, you exactly identify the limits of what you're applying for money for, and the grant was awarded by OPWC, which will pay for half the cost of the repairs.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions from the gallery?
Mine.
Ms. Gerhert?
So, they'll cover half of the $913,000, or that is our half?
No, that, the project, OPWC is half OPWC and half city. It also pays for half the construction inspection costs, and it'll also back reimburses for half of the design cost.
Okay, and so this is the total cost of the project?
Of the construction portion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Nobody in the gallery? Thank you, Mr. Tiedeki. Can I get a motion to call for this, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We have no pending legislation. Do we have anything for miscellaneous? From my committee? Other council members? Gallery? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second.
We are adjourned at 18:06. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up, Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are in Environmental Health and Social Services. Meeting this evening in council chambers, Jan. 2nd, 2025, 18:04 PM. All members of my committee, myself as chair, for the best and as co-chair, Kayla Thompson, just in here, present, along with other council members, with the exception of Emily Beck, as well as guests as noted on my sheet. We have no requests for legislation, no pending legislation. Is there any miscellaneous discussion from my committee or the body? The gallery? And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, and we are adjourned at 18:05.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Next up is Planning and Analysis Codes, Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, Analysis, and Codes. Monday, June 2nd, 2025, 6:05 PM in council chambers. Committee is present, which consists of Councilors Thompson, Harris, President Gerhert, myself, as chair, all others noted. Couple of requests tonight. First is a request from Mayor Judge, requesting legislation to adopt the construction manager risk process for projects. Final version in progress to be submitted, which we have here. Emergency wording, one reading requested. Mayor, if I recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the ORC codes give us the ability to take on this for our big project, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions from the body? Councilor Easterling?
I mean, we haven't even approved it being built, is my only question. It's kind of the cart before the horse. I mean, shouldn't we be a little closer to something before we go signing contracts with somebody who may not have a job?
This, again, correct me if I'm wrong, this just puts it in our codes that we have the authorization to hire. It's not forcing us to do it, but...
It's just the process.
Is this the construction manager?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just a way that any project in the city of Barburton could do, could happen. Not this specific project, although it would benefit this specific project, but it's any project in Barburton. It's amending, as you said, our codified.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the body? From the gallery? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is from Plank Director Stacy Carter, requesting legislation to amend Chapter 1454 of the vacant property registration program. One reading, emergency wording requested. Did everybody see the request for the updated of the section?
Parts of it.
What's that?
Parts of it.
Are there any questions on it for Director Carter, because I see her right there.
There's a lot in there, I don't...
Anything from the body? Any comments from the gallery? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most? Councilor Harris?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes, three to one. We have no appointments, nothing pending. Since the director's here, but I don't seem to have a new development code in front of me. Director, you want to address that?
Yeah, so, we have received comments from individuals within the city. We are gathering those comments, and we're shipping them to OHM for final review. And Mrs. Miller and I are still also going through with the fine-toothed comment.
Yeah, to be clear, unfortunately, this coincided with the charter review, so I'm trying to do both. It's difficult.
But it is moving along, it's not, it's not sitting still. We're actively working on it, so...
Is there any estimate? You said more was sent to OHM.
So, we need to get our, like, minded Mrs. Miller's final comments in there, but they're actively working on just updating the small comments. More so, just instead of like, should be, it shall be, just to make sure we have more teeth when we do certain items.
Is there any way we can at least see a draft?
Um, I think I did send it out. There was a link to a draft, if you guys don't have it, I can send it back out.
Please do.
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Quick question. This piece of legislation that you just had, this vacant property registration, refers to the development code frequently. Do we know whether there'll be... Is there things in here that are going to combat the new development code?
Nope.
Are we sure?
We will make sure.
I mean, we don't have our new development code yet.
That's, that's part of the administration.
Whatever development code is enacted, at the time, there was a challenge to, if there's a portion of the ordinance that someone said...
Grandfathered, basically.
Well, it applies, if it says the development code, it's whatever development code exists at the time someone's challenging.
That was passed?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, not when it was passed. The development code as it exists. Because the development code's always being amended, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? One more time from the gallery, anything? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, we are adjourned at 6:11.
Thank you, Mr. Heidig. Last but not least, finance and personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, June 2nd, 2025, 6:11 PM, here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Heidig, and President Gerhert, as well as all other council members, with the exception of Mrs. Beck, who is absent. And guests as noted on my sheet. We have a few requests for legislation this evening. The first is a letter from Jeremy Flaker, our finance director, requesting legislation to appropriate $6 million from the unappropriated item of the City Hall Justice Center Project Fund to the capital budget of the City Hall Justice Center Project Fund. One reading, and emergency wording requested, and that is attached. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have another request from Jeremy Flaker, requesting legislation to transfer the $6 million to the City Hall Justice Center Project Fund. One reading, emergency wording requested, as also attached. Any remarks? Yes.
It's more of a question. With this transfer, because right now it's kind of more earmarked for the project, transferring it makes it absolutely set that the $6 million is only going to be spent on this?
So, yes and no. Once the transfer's done, yes, it is earmarked for that, it needs to be used for that project 100%. Now, if the project, for some reason, falls apart, at that point in time, I can go and request the money. It's a process, but I would deem that fund being as inactive than the money that could go back to the general fund at that point in time. But yes, it would 100% dedicate that money at that point to that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Mr. President. To be clear, if there were grants received for this, those would not be, we would have to return to the funder, not... If there's any money in there that was earmarked for that specific project, we can't keep it if the project doesn't go forward. So, if you're talking about general fund dollars that were spent, those could go back, but others would probably have to go back to the source.
Sure, I make sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have one referred from safety, a letter from Chief Vincent Morber of the Barburton Police Department, requesting legislation to appropriate $57,000 from the unappropriated budget of the general fund to the police department capital budget for the purchase of an outfitted Ford Explorer. Emergency wording is requested. That should also be attached. I believe we talked about this last week. This is to replace one that's been in multiple accidents, I believe. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call?
Motion?
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have another letter from Jeremy Flaker, finance director, requesting legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Wicker Insurance Company for a one-year renewal of insurances. Amounts to be supplied as soon as received. Emergency wording is requested, please see request. I'm assuming we don't have those numbers yet?
No, I do not. I spoke with the insurance company today regarding when can I expect the numbers. They're negotiating right now, the final rate. They're hoping to have something to me this week, so as soon as I get that information, I'll forward it on to you guys. I just wanted to get the ball rolling on it, so we're not 11-hour trying to get stuff submitted and everything. So, I'm perfectly content with it going two readings.
Okay.
Until I can get you guys the dollar figures. As long as it's passed before June 20th, I guess you make that.
Okay. Thanks. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call, please?
Sorry?
Oh, yep.
Clarification, will this be going two readings?
Yeah. At least, as long as we have the numbers. So, on something that we don't know.
Okay. Awesome, thank you, Chair.
Yep. Is there a motion to call for this? Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Got to open it up for a miscellaneous discussion from my committee or the body. Anything from the gallery? Alright, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 6:17.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee meetings for this evening. Normally, I would jump right into our committee of the whole meeting, however, I just need five minutes to get some things in order. So, we'll take a five-minute break and come back. Five minutes. Is your hand?
Same as mine.
That's the people that talk.
All right. Okay. All right, apologize for the delay. We're going to go ahead and get started. Speaker. Today's June 2nd, Monday, June 2nd, 2025. Today's committee of the whole meeting for Barberton City Council. I call this meeting to order at 6:26 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're move into citizens addressing council, and I have two today. Apologize. I do know that I was supposed to have my stuff together. Somewhere.
Got derailed.
I did. We do, so I'll just go off memory. We'll start with Don from Metro.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we wanted to come by and talk to you a little bit about what Metro's doing and all the services that we are supplying and providing to the community. And we, of course, have many conversations with Mayor Judge, and he said, hey, come by and let council know what you're doing, too. So, you know, one of the coolest things that's happening is we have been able to really invest in the community themselves and the service so we can provide what people are asking for. And one of the things we've been very, very intentional about is going out and talking to the people who ride the bus. My goal is not to get any of you out of your car and into the bus. My goal is to make sure that we are providing a service that works for the people who need it, the people who ride it, whether you choose to ride it or have to ride it, doesn't matter. What do you need? And how is that going to work for you? Apparently, it's worked very well for us because our ridership is up about 23% over post-COVID type numbers. We are almost back to pre-COVID numbers, which is pretty good. We're sitting at right around 89% right now. The service is continuing to grow. Matter of fact, you'll notice in the packet that I provided for you, we have some proposed changes to the service, but it's all good stuff. It's all about adding to the service. The number eight, which goes through Kenmore, Barberton, down past Summit Lake, through Kenmore, and up into Barberton, is going to be a 15-minute service. It's going to become one of our main corridor routes. And so you will see that bus every 15 minutes come through. Frequency is key to making a good transit system, and we have been able to, since 2023, we've been able to take five routes and make them into quick corridor routes that are 15-minute service. We used to have one. Now we have five. We have done that all with the current budget that we have by making sure that we're taking our service, providing it where it needs to be provided, and doing it in a way that just works for folks. You'll also probably, I can't remember if it's in there or not, we have a new pilot program that we just started over the last few months called Metro Next, and that service is what we call a microtransit service. It allows people who are in a zone to call and schedule a trip from wherever they are to wherever they want to go and in the zone, wherever they want to go, in the zone. Or we can take it to the bus route, and when you grab the bus route, then riding the bus through to wherever you're headed to does not cost you more money than than the trip. And it's all done on an app on your phone. So it's kind of like calling an Uber in a way, only it's more economical. And it, I think we run about a little quicker than to than Uber. I don't know if anybody's tried to get an Uber anywhere in Summit County. It's not the easiest thing to do. We are looking at, this is a pilot program, and we're looking at expanding that program around to two other zones. That is going to depend on how well this does and, of course, being able to continue to afford that type of a service. But we think it works well for folks who live not in the dense area, who live outside of of main routes. And so it's, you know, it's all about the community and what we can do for them. Another thing that's in your packet is a part that we do, we've been doing this now, I think this is the fourth summer, where on Saturdays and Sundays in June, July, and August, you can ride the bus for free. Doesn't cost you a dime. Jump on wherever it is. Again, you can use an app to see where the bus is, which has worked out very well. We've also moved into what we call the Easy Fare Program, where you can actually pay to get on the bus during during the week in the summer, all the time, on the other times. You can pay with your phone. So you download this app, you put money on the app, and then you can use that app to get on the bus. The coolest part about that is that we've instituted now what we call fare capping. So it costs a buck and a quarter to ride a bus. It costs $3 for you to ride all day with a pass, and it costs 50 bucks to ride all month on a pass. Some people can't get to 50, don't have 50 bucks upfront, right? So let's say you go out and you pay a dollar and a quarter, and let's say you rode three times that day, that's 375. That, if you're using that app, it's going to stop you at $3. It's only going to charge you the $3, and it knows when it can stop doing that. You can continue to ride on that ticket that you bought on your phone for the rest of the day. If you do this and it takes you, let's say you get through $50 worth of rides and you do it in two weeks, you're going to ride the rest of the month for free. If you're using that app, it knows that you have paid that amount of money. So that allows people who can't, like I said, fork over 50 bucks in the in the beginning of the month for a pass, and that helps people to be able to even be, for the bus to be more affordable for them. We also have a maintenance and operations facility that we are currently in the throes of building. This is, it's an amazing facility. We are right now working in a facility that is, it was built back, I think it was in 1984, so it's about 21 years old, actually 41 years old, if I know how to do math, which I don't, apparently. But it was built for like about 200 people and about 100 buses. We now have over 200 vehicles, and we have almost 500 employees that work in our spot. So this is going to be a maintenance and operations facility only. We're continuing to house our admin group in the current building, and in November, the maintenance and operations will move into this new facility. This new facility is a lead facility, and it will set us up for the future because this is going to be able to hold probably somewhere around 400 vehicles by the time you're done, be able to work on them, get them out easily, not have to jockey around. You see, our poor guys, our poor maintenance guys, sometimes they have to actually tow a bus out of a, out of a bay so they can put another bus in to work on it while they wait for parts for another one. They won't have to do this with this. There's going to be plenty of room. It's also going to give us state-of-the-art facilities to house things for the public, have public meetings, things like this, where I think we've got a room that'll house about 350 people. So, you know, we're moving forward. We're doing the things that that we think work for the community. We're talking to the community about what works best for them. We also have the, say, the date in your packet, November 13th is when we plan on opening this new building. You're all invited to come out and watch us cut a ribbon if you'd like. But we appreciate the support that Barberton gives us as an reporting authority on our board. We appreciate Mayor Judge and everything that he's done to continue to help us to move forward. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer when I can.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question, Justin.
Ms. Gerhart? Normally, we don't allow questions, but we're good.
That's right.
No, you're good.
I'll call her. I'm good.
All right. Next up is Ms. Lawson. You step up to the microphone. You just have to mention your name and the organization you're with.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Kendall Lawson. I'm president of Askey Local 265. I represent the Barberton City employees, Barberton City School employees, Northern City employees, and Dyna Housing Authority employees, and I am also employed by the city of Barberton. I'm here today to speak on your suggestion to do away with our building department here in Barberton. My first question is why? How does this benefit the city? And what good does it do for the city to send our work to the county? I would like to hear from each council member as to why you think this is a good idea and how it would benefit the city. I have some cards here with my contact information if you want to call and have a conversation or sit down and have a conversation with me. So sending the work to the county does nothing but hurt the city, in my opinion. It takes away some of the money the building department brings in. It is a disadvantage to our citizens, the people that elected you to be in the seats that you're in right now. It has some drag to Accrins, Accrins to pull permits they may need, makes the city unsafe by possibly causing work to be done without a permit. Contractors may not want to drive all the way to Accrins to pull needed permits. And it won't be enforced, having a permit won't be enforced like it is now because how often do you think the county's actually going to be barbeting? They're not going to be barbeting every day like our building department employees are. It takes pride away from the city because it's not our people. Some of our members here that work for the city, a lot of them work or live in Barberton, so it's not people that live here doing the work anymore. It's some random people from the county coming in doing the work. This is also a direct violation of our union contract because it's taking our work and giving it away, and it's taking some jobs away possibly by sending it to the county. It would cause layoffs, and then those would, that would cause bumping, which would affect my whole unit here in the city, leaving hard-working people jobless in an already very tough economy. Lastly, I just don't see how doing away with the building department helps the city or benefits the city at all. That's all I have today. Thank you for your time, and I hope you take my concerns into consideration, and please don't hesitate to reach out so we can have further discussion on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lawson. You can hand those out.
Yep.
And thank you, guys, everybody for coming in.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving on to committee reports. And we'll start with street sidewalk and lighting with Mrs. Beck. Ms. Beck is absent, so co-chair Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Street sidewalks and lighting met this evening. We had one request for legislation, a letter from Michael Tiedeki, city engineer, requesting legislation to enter into contract with Construction King, Inc. for the concrete repave, for concrete paving project. Total contract will be $913,682. Emergency wording requested, please see request. And we, we understand that OPWC is going to cover half of that. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Farm and Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here in Farm and Health and Social Services, met in council chambers this evening. We had another request for legislation, no pending legislation, and we passed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Planning, Annexation and Codes, Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, Annexation and Codes is calling for legislation to adopt the construction manager risk process for projects into our development code and legislation to amend Chapter 1454 of the vacant property registration program. That I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Heidig. City Properties Park and Recreation, Mr. Eastland.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met May 27th here in council chambers, and we actually moved and request an ordinance to sell some property, which we're working on getting that back to step one and move forward. And then we had a slight discussion about the splash pad that is still going to be open once the hot season comes. But we have no, no new legislative report, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Eastland. Public Welfare and Safety, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Welfare and Safety met on May 27th, 2025. We had one request for legislation. It was a letter from Chief Vincent Morber of the Barberton Police Department requesting legislation to appropriate $57,000 from the unappropriated budget of the general fund to the police department capital budget for the purchase of an outfitted Ford Explorer. Emergency wording requested, and we referred this to finance, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Rules Marketing Development, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules Marketing and Development Committee met on Tuesday, May 27th. We passed all proposed charter changes and amendments out of my committee so that they can next become resolutions, possibly. And with that, that was it, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. City Utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Utilities has nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Finance Personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Personnel met this evening at 6:11 here in council chambers. All members of the committee were present, as well as all of the council members, with the exception of Mrs. Beck and guests listed on my sheet. We had a few requests for legislation, the first being a letter from Jeremy Flaker, Finance Director, requesting legislation to appropriate $6 million from the unappropriated item of the City Hall/Justice Center Project Fund to the capital budget of the City Hall/ Justice Center Project Fund. One reading and emergency wording requested. Another request to transfer the $6 million to City Hall/Justice Center Project Fund. One reading, emergency wording requested. We also had a referral from Safety, a letter from Chief Vincent Morber of the Barberton Police Department requesting legislation to appropriate $57,000 from the unappropriated budget of the general fund to the police department capital budget for the purchase of an outfitted Ford Explorer. Emergency wording requested. And finally, another request from Jeremy Flaker requesting legislation, authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with our insurance company for a one-year renewal of entrances. Amounts will be supplied as soon as possible. Emergency wording requested. We don't have numbers for that yet, so we're thinking it's probably going to go to readings. I did not mention this during my committee meeting, I apologize, but we do have pending legislation, and that is ordinance number 62-2025. The first reading was last week. Title, amending ordinance number 47-2021, compensation for elected officials, to establish the compensation for certain elected officials and compensation procedures for the next four years and declaring an emergency that will go three readings. There was no miscellaneous discussion, and we had joined at 6:17. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee reports. I have nothing to, nothing to report to the public, just for, well, actually, I do. We have an executive session, obviously, to directly follow this today. Then I have nothing. Is there anything from the body? Any? Ms. Miller?
So many of you are familiar with the Howe Municipal Attorneys Association, the OMAA. It's a sub-organization of the Howe Municipal League. Last week sometime, they called for people to join an amicus brief, which is a friend of the court brief in support of the city of Cincinnati. So the city of Columbus is drafting an amicus brief to support the city of Cincinnati. It's a taxpayer action variation. So one of the qualifications, if you want to initiate a taxpayer action, is that you have to be the taxpayer, and one of the actions you have to say harmed you. And then, and this is very paraphrasing, in the city of Cincinnati, they have those action, but the person isn't a taxpayer, and they don't, and they didn't meet the second prompt. Jeremy, you might be able to speak to a little bit more, because I asked him before. I agreed to sign on, and Jeremy said that it would be difficult for, it would have impact to the city of Barberton. So we aren't suing anybody, nobody's suing us. This is an issue for the city of Cincinnati, but for home rule issues and so forth, city of Columbus is filing an amicus brief, and we are just signing on as signatories to the city of Columbus's amicus brief. And I just want to make sure you guys do that. Any questions?
Ms. Miller, thank you. This, that's just layman's terms. That just means like we're endorsing, we're not putting any money, we're helping them legally, maybe?
Nope, we're not doing anything. The city of Columbus has a tremendous legal department, and they kind of lead a lot of initiatives on behalf of municipalities in the state because they have a lot of human resources to do that.
Okay. So we're just on board?
We're just saying, us, we agree, yes.
Okay.
All right? Anything else? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought she said yes.
Oh, no.
No, okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Is there anything else from department heads? Chief, you got anything? All right. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past week or two, we lost two good retired city employees, Mr. Jerry Young from the Barbara Fire Department, Mr. Terry Palmer from the water treatment plant. Two great employees and even better individuals, so please keep their loved ones and your thoughts and prayers. Coming up in about a week, June 14th, busy weekend, Outsmart the Scam workshop put on by Summit County will be held at the Barberton Middle School. So a lot of great information there. That's from 10:00 AM till noon. My open office hours are on that day from 9:00 AM till 11:00 at the Active Adult Center. There's also the Arts and Music Festival going on downtown, so very busy weekend. Earlier, I sent an email to council about setting up the time for us to ride around your ward, around the city. We go visit places, businesses, or homes, or troubled spots, or if you have questions about something, we can take a few minutes or, you know, half a day or whatever it takes. Sometimes it's better to go out and see the problem firsthand versus trying to, you know, what you may say or what we may think and the perception and things like that. So it's a lot, I've had great success in the past in going out and seeing it firsthand together, so. So send me some dates, and we can set that up. Do want to thank Dawn from Metro for coming by and updating council. We speak fairly often about ways to improve service, not only here in Barberton, but, you know, throughout the county and the service area. So always talk about continuous improvement, so I want to thank her for coming by today. And then just lastly, school is out. Barberton City Schools are out for the summer, so please be aware, cognizant of kids.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just repeat the time and date for the Outsmart the Scam thing?
June 14th. That's from 10:00 AM till noon at the Barberton Middle School.
All right. Thank you. Coincidentally, I had a lot of, a couple people reach out about something like that. All right. Thank you, Mayor. With that, this is typically the point where we adjourn, but we'll move into the executive session portion of this meeting. A request was made by Justin Greer, President of City Council, myself, to enter into an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, or discipline, or promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or officials. Having stated this request, do I have a motion to entertain into this executive session? Mr. Heide?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion entered executive session.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll second Mr. Heide's motion.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heide and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to enter into an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, or promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or officials. All those in favor? Actually, clerk, please call the roll on that.
President Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Heide?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Eastling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
All right. We're now in executive session at 6:50.